Might as well get started. Welcome, everyone, to the August six -- this says August fifteenth.
It is the fifteenth.
August fifteenth meeting, a special meeting of the Town of Los Gatos Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Barbara Spector?
Here.
Councilmember Mariko Sayak?
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Leonardi?
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie?
Here. Okay, if everyone could stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's go back to this, turn this off. Okay, so next up will be verbal communications, three minutes for anybody who wishes to address us on something that's not on tonight's agenda. Angelia Dorner.
All right, that wasn't a setup, was it? Hi there, Angelia Dorner, a still proud but prior resident of the Almond Grove. Oh, this is going to be harder than I thought. Okay, this year started out and has continued to be quite a whirlwind. January, my sister had some really serious surgery and I was able to go back and help her. She's doing great. It's just that my three weeks there turned into two months to make sure she could get on, get by on her own. And then I had to go back for a third surgery that she was going to need. So I spent a lot of time out of town the first part of this year, quite a few months. And it really gave me a chance to reflect on the next seven to 10 years of my life. At my age, her back was a lot better than mine is right now. And I really need to do some more things that are better for me, for my health, for my stress. Definitely get more emotional return out of the time that I commit to what I do. And reprioritize my goals. The next seven years of my life hopefully will be in better shape for the next 10 or 20 after that. So I've always loved Los Gatos, as you know, and my house was always my proverbial safety net. Emergency for that rainy day. I could always sell the house and leave. I could never stay in Los Gatos if I sold my house and wasn't able to be there. But with the cost of living, the wasted time in the car where every 30-minute errand is now an hour and a half, as well as all of the other things that have been going on in this area, I just really saw a lot of gray clouds on our horizon as far as it relates to the continuing traffic and dilemmas of what is facing this town. And I honestly just don't want to deal with it. So instead of waiting for the government to take even more control, now I can't even use a plastic straw, everything in my life, including the last, yeah, the last straw, unfunded pension, close to a trillion dollars, do you guys understand that? Anyway, I am moving to Asheville, North Carolina. At least for the next year, I'm going to be enjoying Asheville, figuring out what my next steps will be. And I hope to stay there, buy a house, not buy a house, I don't know, contribute my time, teach people how to read, do some contribution work and stuff without having to worry about all of the other stresses of life. And in my last comments, I know the Highway Nine Corridor study is supposed to be completed soon. I hope to goodness that it has some value in it. And coming up on the one-year anniversary of losing our dear friend Sal, please, every time you hear the word Masal, think of Miss Sal. And I appreciate everything you guys have done for the town. Thank you.
Okay, any comment, any questions for Ms. Dorner? Say none, thank you. Would anybody else wish to address us on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing nobody coming forward, no more cards, I'll close the verbal communication and move on to Agenda Item One of our public hearings, which is a continuation of the potential amendments to the North Forty specific plan. And I'll turn it over to Joel to introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we were here last Tuesday on the seventh where the council continued their discussions on potential amendments. Following that discussion, the item was continued to this evening with some direction to provide information regarding distribution of development capacity as well as information to regarding meeting our affordable housing targets from the housing element. So that information is provided in the staff report. There's also an addendum that includes some additional information that was requested along with public comment, as well as a desk item that contains similar information, or well, it contains different information, but information and additional public comment as well. So staff's here to help council through this continued discussion, in addition to myself. Obviously, we have the town attorney, the town manager, and then we have Parks and Public Works staff. And that concludes staff's report, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sayak.
Thank you. So, Mr. Paulson, thank you for Attachment Forty-Six. I know I had asked for this earlier. And so if you could just walk me through, so I'm absolutely clear what I'm looking at. The first column, Housing Element Units, that's pretty self-explanatory. This is what we told the state of California we would plan for, given our RENA numbers. Phase-one units, my understanding is this is what we actually received with the phase-one application. And so if you could just explain to me the second, well, the next three columns, Housing Element Units Remaining.
Sure, thank you. So the Housing Elements, Housing Element Units Remaining is a account of the income levels from the housing element, removing the various categories of housing we got with the phase-one applications. So that leaves you the delta of remaining units pursuant to the housing element. And then the next column is the existing units that are remaining under the current maximum development capacity for residential, which is 270. And so that's the 33 units. And based on our below-market price guidelines for affordable housing, we split them between moderate and low. And so that's why you see the three and the four and then the additional. And then moving forward to the last column, that is, if the council is interested in increasing the number of units to 455, the total of 185 would be added to the 270 that's currently allowed. And so that's an accounting of how those units would be split up based on our current BMP guidelines. Go ahead.
Okay, so, thank you for that. So a couple of questions on this. So in our housing element, we did not specify an extremely low with, for this plot of property.
So in the housing element, very low includes both very low and extremely low.
Okay, okay, so that helps explain that. And the second question, this is for you and for Mr. Schultz. So given the new housing laws that are in place, we are still on the hook, so to speak, for what we said we would provide for the 270s. And that includes all the different income levels, correct?
Well, I don't know that we're on the hook. Obviously, the housing laws are evolving and changing virtually every year now. So moving forward, staff doesn't anticipate that the Department of Housing and Community Development is going to penalize jurisdictions, whether it's the town or others, because they're, the planning for those units versus the requirement of meeting the specific targets as we move forward. We don't believe that they're going to penalize all of the jurisdictions in California because many of them won't meet that target. I would say ultimately, this will probably get tested through either conversations with HCD and legislator, legislators, or there may be actual court cases. And so, Mr. Schultz, I don't know if you have any additional, or Ms. Pervetti?
Okay. And one more question on this. If I remember the court case with regards to our phase-one application correctly, one of the, I'm paraphrasing, but one of the issues with the distribution of incomes that we had was that it was an appendix to this specific plan versus, so it wasn't a requirement that it meet these income levels because it was only an appendix, is that correct?
Not only an appendix, it didn't say it was mandatory for those number of units to be in those categories. It referred more to what our BMP, we had to meet the density bonus and we had to meet the BMP requirements of 20%, which they made. And that's what I was going to say with Joel, is you've got these numbers in our housing element, which they've given us, but it doesn't match. There is no possible way you could have required those when our BMP requirements are 20%, correct? Joel?
Yeah, that's, yeah, our requirement in the specific plan aligns with our town code, which is 20%. And again, our current guidelines split that between moderate and low. I think we're going through a modification that was required by HCD of our AHOs sites. And so remember, we had those various categories where we said we're going to produce this many of each income level. They said that was too much of a barrier, and so they asked us to put a straight 40% on that. And so that's what we'll be coming back for a second reading at your next meeting.
Okay, and my third question to, maybe to Mr. Schultz, then. If we wanted to provide the housing that is within the different income levels, then one way to strengthen our specific plan to make sure that we do actually receive these units is to actually put it into the specific plan rather than just referring to it?
Correct. But will those numbers, if they're actually in your specific plan, create a barrier for housing? Because can someone actually build a project with that many extremely low, low, and moderate and make, and a project would be feasible? It's the same as the AHOs where we had a number that was extreme, that they said you're actually creating a barrier to housing. So I'm not sure, it's just an issue I want to, I want to raise, that if you plug those numbers in, would a project even be feasible, a housing project with that many extremely low and low housing numbers? I just don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm?
No, I do understand, but what I'm, what I'm also trying to comprehend is...
The question is, is it strengthening it? Yes.
Yes.
The reason from the court case was because they determined it was in the appendix and it was only as an example. It didn't say specifically, this is what you have to have.
Okay.
It said instead, you have to meet our BMP, which they did.
So, okay, so as a planner and as someone that is trying to indicate to the public what kind of income levels we want and be absolutely clear that we want affordable housing, it is to my benefit, to our benefit, to indicate what that affordability is?
Yes.
And it would be to help strengthen the objectivity to actually put numbers in? And I could refer to the housing element based on what we submitted to the state of California? So is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. A couple of follow-up questions. When we say we're going to put into the specific plan, take it out of the appendix, Mr. Schultz, what is the "it" that you see us taking out? Do you see us taking out numbers? Do you see us taking out moderate? Or do you see us taking out a dollar sign?
But I believe Councilmember Sayak was saying, I believe what Councilmember Sayak was saying was taking the delta numbers that are still left to be met on the North Forty and requiring those numbers to be met with any housing productivity that was put on the project.
Okay, and again, from your point of view, let's say then, I'm just going to make stuff up, let's say the number is 84 and we want 84 low. Do we put 84 low in the plan or do we monetize that? I mean, what does 84 low mean?
That's how many units would have to be developed.
And what does low mean?
Low is determined by the category that's done by the housing authority. They determine that requirement for low or extremely low.
I'm trying to be as clear and objective as I can be. And Ms. Pervetti, I think.
Let me, let me just elaborate, that every year, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development updates the countywide affordability levels. So every year, we have a different number. So, you know, the median income is set. Right now, it's over $100,000 for a family of four. And then 80% of that, you know, has a specific significance, et cetera. So we wouldn't be able to legislate those income levels in the specific plan because they do change annually. But it is a term of art to say very low, low, moderate income housing.
And then could we, again, to be as specific as possible, could we then refer to the fact that these, how these numbers are established and that they may be changed year to year?
If that's the desire of the council, yes.
And then the last question, again, for the town attorney. Use the word that if we use these numbers, the housing may not be feasible. And by not feasible, meaning that a developer may not want to develop at that level?
Correct. If you, and in fact, I'm not sure I've ever seen what you would, if you're really rezoning property to be nothing but it's affordable, because all the units are going to be extremely low or low until someone, they have to build affordable housing on their property, I'm not sure you can do that. You've got, you know, taking requirements there to just say you have to build nothing but affordable, if you're using all the units that we're going to allow. Now, it could be you allow another use. You can say you can do commercial, but if you want to do housing, it has to be all affordable. But to tell a piece of property owner that he must develop, if he wants to develop on his property, it has to be all affordable housing, I'm not sure you can do that and have no other use.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if that's where you were heading to. There has to be some component that allows the person for a return on his investment. Now, what that is, is I don't know. But I didn't know if we were heading to where all the units that we are going to designate that can be left have to fall into an affordable category and there will be no non-restricted housing. I don't believe I've ever seen that done on a piece of property.
Councilmember Sayak?
So, so how do affordable housing builders provide projects, then, if, when they're strictly affordable housing?
They do that voluntarily. So you certainly could do it voluntarily, that's what I mean. If you're, if it's, there's other uses they could do, or they decide to use that property because of tax credits or other things, kind of like part of the property in the first phase is completely affordable, that's going to be owned by Eden, you can do that. But to zone property, affordable housing, and nothing else could create some problems for us.
Okay, so I appreciate that, but let me just make sure I understand, then. We're talking about the remaining 20 acres?
Right.
And so the, the capacity for that goes beyond residential, so...
Yes, I mean, if we have another use that's available, then I'm...
Okay, so I just want to make sure I under, okay.
I didn't know where we were heading and just saying...
No, no, no. What I, I just want to understand is what we've said to the state that we would provide in our housing element, what we've actually produced and what remains, without any existing changes, I wanted to be absolutely clear what that was.
Yes.
And so this chart provides it. And so now, if I'm looking at how to strengthen the objectivity versus subjectivity, to clarify that low, moderate, above moderate, as the state of California defines it, that would, in your opinion, be considered clear, objective rationale?
Yes.
Okay.
We could come back with that language that would plug those numbers in. For example, there's X amount of units that's left just currently on our specific plan. If we wanted to be specific about the number of units that are left, yes, we could do that.
Okay.
To exactly what category, because they, they don't have to do any housing at all if they don't want to. They could do commercial.
Okay.
But if, in fact, we were heading the other way to make it tremendously housing and very little commercial, and said all of the housing has to be affordable, then we could run into some...
No, so for, what I just want to do is, again, we're taking what we created in our existing plan and trying to strengthen the objectivity behind it. And so one way I'd like to do that is to further explain the housing element that we attach to it. So in your opinion, that's okay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow up on those questions a little bit. I think it was Ms. Pervetti or Mr. Paulson pointed out, or Mr. Schultz, I don't know, sorry, that in passing our housing element, we were told by the state HCD that we could not have specific categories for our housing because that provided a barrier to construction of housing, because most affordable housing is in fact funded by market rate housing in order to get the loans and the tax credits. Could something that Councilmembers Spector and Sayak are talking about be subject to a challenge for imposing a barrier to housing by, for example, a nonprofit housing group or some other person that wants to challenge that kind of zoning?
I think that's pretty much what I was trying to say is, yes.
Then my second question is, even if the council were to amend the specific plan to put in numbers on categories as defined by state and federal law for affordability, that does not require any developer to build that, correct? There is no guarantee that you will produce that housing if you put those numbers in the plan. Just like now, we have certain things in the plan, the, no application is coming forward. So changing the plan to put in numbers does not mean we will get that housing, correct?
Right. Currently, your specific plan that's, that you have the moratorium on has commercial and any developer could come in and do nothing but a commercial project with no housing whatsoever.
Right. So putting those numbers in doesn't mean we're going to get affordable housing?
Correct.
One mechanism to get affordable housing that's pointed out in the staff report is to engage in negotiation, there where there's a contractual obligation to provide it by means of a development agreement, is that right?
That's correct.
Thanks. Oh, I had another question unrelated.
Please, go ahead.
Last week, we heard an argument from Mr. Ventura that we needed to distribute housing opportunities across the remaining properties for the North Forty. My question is, aside from any kind of equitable argument, is there any legal obligation at all to distribute housing opportunities, commercial opportunities, anything else, across the property?
No, as long as they can make some viable use of their property and we, I mean, if you've got to the end and the last property and all the commercial and all the residential was taken up, then I think we'd have to do an amendment. We couldn't say you can't build because the specific plan's built out. But as long as there's some viable use, it can still be used under the specific plan, then there wouldn't be any taking.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. Following up on that, since we have before us currently the possibility of amending the specific plan and looking at the most north portion of that property, which staff, thank you, showed us, depicted on Attachment Forty-Five, would it also be possible to remove that portion of the property from the specific plan?
Yes, I think you could, you could redraw the boundaries of the specific plan. I don't think there's anything that says you can't do that. I think if you were to add property in, then there'd be all sorts of requirements regarding our EIR. But to retract out, and maybe Joel has more.
Well, I would just offer that, you know, the specific plan is intended to set the parameters for this entire area. So pulling one piece out may be challenging on a number of levels from infrastructure. That's probably the biggest one, because one of the other main access points to the specific plan area is at that Samaritan intersection. We would then have to come back and do probably general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, and zone changes to revert that back to its original zoning.
What is the original zoning?
Was CH, Restricted Highway Commercial.
Okay, and so, let's assume it reverts back to CH. Do you know that we would have to amend all those other ordinances and plans?
Yes.
Because they, they are not CH?
No, because they're currently zoned specific plan, the North Forty specific plan, they have that zoning. And then we would have to probably make other modifications in the language in the general plan itself, where it speaks about the specific plan area and its boundaries and things of that nature.
And I would, following up on a question before, I would also assume that if there, if there is an amendment to, amendments to the specific plan, or if there are not, a discussion between the property owners, let's say the two property owners, that is... that is something that could be done in a, uh, in a negotiated agreement, development agreement.
I'll defer to Rob, but I would assume if both parties came to the table and they were party to that agreement, then that would be possible.
And I would go to Mr. Schultz also, is that, I can't remember in all of the documents you gave us, uh, does that kind of thing have to be, uh, something that is voluntary pursued by the property owners? Or can it be part of a council motion for a development agreement?
So you could, you could actually require all the property owners within a specific plan area to do a development agreement if that's what you, you desired, or you could make it the option of the developer. Um, so I've seen it in, I was just doing my research and I found in a couple where they required development agreements for each and every development that went through in a specific plan.
And if that...
And I've seen it in other ones where it says, you know, you've got your base and if you want to change anything within that base and do anything other than that, then it would have to be negotiated through a development agreement. So I've seen it both ways.
And if the, uh, if the decision were to, um, require the discussions between the property owners, would that also, uh, could the components of that, uh, discussion or agreement be identified by the council?
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, we're not, let's say the council doesn't want the north part of the property in the center of the property. They don't want every aspect of the North Forty specific plan to be at issue in these discussions. Could the, uh, issues to be discussed or considered be defined by the council?
Well, everything's defined by the council. I'm just not sure what you mean by the issues to be discussed. You mean the negotiating points in a development agreement?
Yes.
Oh, yes. They're all, they all come through council.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
So following up on that, um, just an observation first that we spent, I don't even know how long now, developing a specific, specific plan for this property in order to get infrastructure and coordinated development and traffic concessions and improvements to Los Gatos Boulevard. So taking apart, it apart now seems to me to be, uh, beyond comprehension. Leaving that aside, uh, we have chapter six of our current specific plan that discusses plan implementation, phasing, and administration. In particular, six point four, one, talks about specific plan administration, how proposed developments are going to come forward. It does not provide in that section for any kind of a plan development or development agreement to come forward to support or an application for proposed development. However, it does refer to our zoning code. I know that development agreements aren't in there. But could a plan development come forward in that context? Or would that need to be amended to allow plan development and/or a development agreement process?
I think the operative word is process. So we could create a process that's analogous to a plan development, because essentially you would have all of the elements of a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a rezoning, and then a development application. I would hesitate to going back to actually legislating in that any new development needs to be a plan development, but I think we can learn from our plan development experience and process and make sure that the administration of the specific plan engages the community and allows for the council decision-making, um, as appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I have no interest in requiring a plan development. I just want to know how, is that an option under our current plan, or does it have to be amended? I think because the plan development is part of our zoning code, it is an option, but I'm not sure. Um, based upon our staff report that we got today indicating that we need to develop a procedure for development agreements, I would imagine that six point four, point one would have to be amended to allow a development agreement, correct?
We don't need to amend the specific plan. We would essentially separately do a townwide ordinance enabling development agreements to happen anywhere in the town. And then that would be a mechanism that would be available to North Forty. If you'd like to stipulate it more clearly as a potential implementation technique, then we would, could certainly do that, but it's, it's not required.
One last follow-up?
Please.
In that same chapter, chapter six, it talks about ironically amendments to the specific plan, how they can be made, who can make them, what the bases for them are. And the thing I'm particularly interested in, is that it allows, uh, in particular, a request for an amendment to come from an applicant from the town and from a resident. If we were to implement a development agreement process, could we also give an option for anyone to implement or ask that that process be implemented within reason? Um, so that the town could ask for it or the developer could ask for it? We could put that into our process and procedures for a development agreement if we want to come forward with that?
That's exactly how the process would work. The, the application for a development agreement would come in and it would have to propose exactly what they were proposing to do and if there was any specific plan amendments, general plan amendments, zoning, um... So you, when you do a development agreement, you can simply, whatever you want to waive, the council can waive a wand or do whatever it wants with regards to zoning regulations, height setbacks, and those things can all be waived, but you can't waive a specific plan or a general plan. You have to, they would have to go through an amendment.
Okay. And finally, uh, my question was really, could the town initiate a development agreement process rather than an applicant?
No, I think that would have to come from an applicant, because there could be an applicant that would not need any type, I mean, we currently have a specific plan and if they could completely fit within that, um, those requirements, then there would not be a development agreement that would be necessary under our current specific plan. We could change that and say all of them have to, but we couldn't pick and choose on we want you to go through or you not to go through. If there's no amendments or no, uh, variations and nothing that they're trying to gain from the town in exchange for something else.
Well, so I'm imagining an amendment to six point four, point one that would say, A, an application could go through a plan development process as indicated in our town zoning code. B, uh, proposed, um, developments in the specific plan area present, may be presented to the town pursuant to the procedures established in resolution whatever we do, which would be for negotiation of development agreement. Could we not put in there that the town could also initiate that process? Applicant can do it or town could request it?
I'm thinking of the situation of why a development agreement, it'd be needed if it was a small enough project and fit completely into the boundaries.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it's needed or required. I'm just wanting to give us options in the specific plan. And could the town have the option of saying to Joe Property Owner, "I would like you to come through a negoti, uh, development agreement process"?
I'd have to, I'd have to check. I'm not certain, because it's, it's usually applicant-driven.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Seacor.
So, um, can you just clarify to me exactly what's the benefit of having a developer's agreement? I know we've talked about it at this meeting in past, and it sounds like there's opportunities to, um, almost treat any negotiation application like a, a plan development. But what would be the difference between the plan development versus a development agreement process?
The plan development process, um, is, is different in the fact that there isn't that negotiations that happen. In the plan development process, it goes through and there isn't that give and take that you can do through a development agreement. Um, you know, for example, I can think of Netflix is one that we started with a development agreement and we didn't go through with it and we switched it to a plan development. Through a development agreement, we could have obtained, I believe, many more benefits for the community through a development agreement than we would have through a plan development. Um, because those negotiations can happen upfront. Um, they can require, they can be monetized, they can be open space requirements, you can go well beyond what's allowed. You can get those through a plan development, but it's just more difficult because it doesn't really happen from a staff level or from a council level. If it's closed session where you can have those discussions. And again, closed sessions aren't allowed just for development agreement, but if there are real property transactions, you can do closed session. So they do take on a different dynamic than a plan, than our plan development process. Um, and that's why, you know, I don't know why you'd do a development agreement if someone was fitting completely in the box, um, they weren't asking for any height requirements, they weren't asking for any additional setback requirements, um, you know, all of the things that are required. But when, when a developer does want to, you know, build more houses and are allowed, go over height limits, what's the exchange? Right now, we kind of just do that in open session instead of doing a development agreement up that says you're going to have to have so much more open space, you're going to have to require whatever the requirements are. And there's no nexus required. I think in a plan development, I think we would probably even have to make that nexus because there's not a negotiation agreement. And that's probably, now that I'm thinking aloud, that's the biggest requirement. A plan development, you are imposing conditions on the development. He's had no ability to negotiate the requirements, so you have to have you, a nexus requirement. As opposed to a, um, development agreement is a contract, um, and you can, don't have to meet those nexus requirements that the project is causing that impact.
Councilmember Specter first.
Thank you. Um, I think maybe just two questions and probably of the town attorney. Hypothetically, if you have a piece of property in Los Gatos, uh, and has, that property has two different owners, uh, and that property has a specific plan, uh, over, overlying it, um, and the specific plan does not allow for housing, but the two property owners want housing, how other than them coming to the town for a development agreement could that occur?
Well, currently, without the development agreement, they would put in the application for the amendment to the specific plan and process that along with the general plan amendment. And then once those are completed, then they could go forward with their project. Or sometimes they're done at the same time with, out the specific plan with the plan development type.
So because these people want, uh, housing instead of commercial, uh, they couldn't just go forward with the development agreement? They would have to go through all the changes of our general plan, specific plan, yada, yada, yada?
But in the development agreement, you can spell out that process, exactly what's going to transpire, how it's going to transpire, what the, you know, public input's going to be required to get them where they apparently want to go. But you still have to have the public hearings.
Okay.
And when they vest, because there is a certain time when you would vest that they're looking for.
All right. So they would make a request of some sort, and I guess I need to ask that, some sort to the town and say, "We would like to do X, Y, and Z." And how do they make that request? And then what's the next step?
So that's the ordinance that we should develop and should have developed some quite, uh, time ago is the government code requires towns to have a development agreement ordinance that shows you exactly what the process would be, what the application process is. And all of that is laid out in the ordinances and there's very few towns or cities I could find that don't have it. Some of them are very short and very quick and some of them are, you know, five, six, seven, eight pages, so...
And if we have a specific plan that has a piece of property that doesn't allow for, doesn't provide for housing, or at least doesn't provide for much housing, would that have to, and that specific plan is not amended, would this have to be a process that goes through a development agreement or a request from the, uh, property owner?
Yes. And so the applicant, under the government code, has, and that's where I want to check to see if the, the town could enforce an applicant, but right now, the government code says an applicant can request that from a town that I want to do a development agreement and we have to have a process to allow them to do that. Um, if the applicant didn't want to do a development agreement, since, and some developers don't like going through that because they don't like it, the fact that you don't have to meet those nexus requirements and are going to be able to exact from a developer without doing any type of nexus study. And they say, "I don't want to do that. I want to go through the amendments." And that's the six-point, whatever section of the specific plan, they would have to file for those amendments and what they requested and go through that process.
Thank you.
And I would just add, for the council's information, one of the amendments that was previously considered was that, uh, any application go through the conceptual development advisory committee at least twice. Um, and so that could be fleshed out more during that process. When someone comes forward with the concept, we can outline, here's what's needed, here's the different options for, uh, consideration, and then receive that input from conceptual development advisory committee.
Councilmember Jensen?
I just wanted to be sure I understand. The current six point five of the specific plan talks about amendments and how you get an amendment. Uh, in the second bullet point, it says that if you propose to amend the specific plan, whoever's doing that has to document the need for such changes, which indicate economic, social, or technical issues that generate the need to amend the specific plan. Uh, costs incurred for the amendment shall be the responsibility of the party requesting the amendment. So if I had, Councilwoman Specter's hypothetical, and I had two parties that wanted to make housing that wasn't otherwise allowed, they would have to come forward with economic, social, or technical issues that generated a need for an amendment. And then the, the third bullet is, it has to go through a CEQA review. So is that, am I correct in that? Okay. The other alternative is that two, two property owners could come together and decide, "I want to do a development agreement and I want to negotiate with the town and I want to enter into a contract where I'm getting concessions, for example, housing, and the town is getting concessions, for example, park." That could be accomplished by way of a, uh, development agreement, once we put the process in place, correct?
That's exactly the two things.
And that, and that would be the process where that outcome would be quote-unquote guaranteed by, by means of a contract?
Yes.
The development agreement contract. However, Ms. Pervetti's looking me cross-eyed, it would still have to come through the planning commission and the town council before it was guaranteed. It couldn't be negotiated as a contract without a public hearing, correct? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody like to ask any more questions? It seems like it'd be an appropriate time to start making motions or discussions towards a motion. The public testimony of this hearing's already been closed, so would anybody like to have some openings? Um, I, well, let's, let's let the vice mayor speak. He hasn't had a chance yet.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I was thinking that the public was going to speak tonight, being that there are so many of them here, but was kind of waiting to hear from them, but I guess we're not going to. Um, so my thoughts are this. Yes, the world needs housing and Los Gatos, um, probably isn't going to be able to resolve that. When I say the world, I mean the world around us, Silicon Valley by ourselves. You know, we were sued last year and we were sued, um, because the developer wanted to move forward with this existing specific plan. And now they're coming back and saying, "Hey, we want to put four hundred fifty-five more houses in there. Isn't that nice?" Um, so I appreciate, you know, all the discussion about housing and putting more housing in there. Um, but I thought about this a lot and I think this council person wants to leave this specific plan as is. I think we spent a lot of time going over, a lot, a lot of time of, um, discussing it over the years. And we came to a conclusion, and that conclusion was challenged and we had lost. And now the person, the very person who challenged us, the very group, you know, the developers who challenged us are now coming back and saying, "Hey, give us four hundred fifty-five housing units." And I just don't really think that's right. I realize our moratorium is expiring this evening. And if you look at the traffic around town and all the comments about how I can't even get to my house, how the, how is public safety going to save my life if I'm dying? And, and the fact that we really can't do anything with Highway seventeen. It's kind of funny that we're even just considering any more development at that intersection at this point in time. I read Markeen Smith's extensive, um, list of, of traffic improvements that would be wonderful if we can ever get the developer to agree to these things. That, that could help us a little bit, but that's not going to happen, unfortunately. They're, they're not going to agree to it. So in my opinion, at this point in time, I mean, I would be a supporter of extending the moratorium until we figure things out, because I think we're just hanging ourselves, quite frankly. Um, I see things such as the allure of affordable housing. I understand that. But again, it's not solely Los Gatos' responsibility to dump four hundred fifty-five units in that spot. Um, and I also think it was kind of a tactic that's being used after a hard-fought battle was already won by the developer for the existing specific plan. I, it's kind of a shame that we even have to further discuss the specific plan. I mean, it's done, you know, it's there. Four hundred thousand square feet of commercial... 400,000 square feet of commercial, the existing commercial, 33 units, whatever it was. It's done, you know? That's what we have on the table. And if they don't want to build it, I'm sure that would make a lot of people happy in town. But I also see the benefits of the sales tax revenue. And that's something I just can't let go of. We've had declining sales tax revenue in town. This whole discussion started a long time ago about filling. What was, I can't think of the term off the top of my head. But filling the void of the Los Gatos community that goes outside to buy their appliances, to buy their goods outside of town. Sales tax leakage. And this is our last opportunity to try to capture some of those dollars and keep the sales tax revenue in town. And to me, that was the whole point of this thing. Well, then along came, let's dump all 300 units in the Los Gatos school district. That was great. And then came along the discussion, well, we're not going to give it to you all at once. Because, you know, I said, let's approve the specific plan all at once, so we know what we're getting, what's going to go here. And the specific plan comes along and it's like, let's put all these housing here. And then we don't know about this part. But we did know about this part because we finally came to agreement. But then now that part's changing. So all along, it was kind of like, let's just dump 700 housing units in here. I just think that's a waste for this piece of property. I think there's better opportunities economically for us, it's our last chance. We can have some nice opportunities to capture some sales tax dollars. Which would really increase the viability of our community in the long run. And I think, yes, again, almost ridiculous at this point. To even discuss any kind of development, again, with the traffic problem. So for me, I would support the moratorium going forward. I don't think I'm going to get four out of five votes. But I'm absolutely, at least, at the very least, at this time. Not in support of amending the specific plan at all. Mr. Ventura brought up a very nice point at the last meeting. Why should these non-Grovener controlled landowners have to subscribe to this specific plan? They're at an economic disadvantage being included in the specific plan. But he said one thing that was interesting. He said that they would be willing to live with the existing specific plan. So that's another reason for my discussion here this evening. And I'm interested in hearing what the other council members have to say. In addition to all the housing comments that have already been mentioned.
Okay, Councilmember Jensen.
Question and then a motion, I think. My question is procedural. It was my understanding that we were having a separate public hearing regarding the moratorium, so the public can speak on that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I agree with Councilman Leonardi's in one respect, and that is that we should not amend our specific plan. As I've listened to the meetings and the people's comments over the last year. It's clear to me that everyone wants something different. And everyone has a vision of what the North Forty should be for their own desires. So for example, I see people out there who want open space and a very large park. I see, I see people who have talked about community gardens. I've seen people have talked about hotels. I've seen people have talked about meeting spaces. I've heard people talk about dance recital halls. I've heard people talk about swimming pools. Most of, if not all of those things can happen under our existing plan. The problem is that where we lack the understanding is that an independent developer has to come forward with that. It's not up to the town. The only way the town can control it is by, for example, negotiating in a development agreement. Or putting in the plan, those things that it would like to have happen. This town has worked on putting the specific plan in place for as long as I can remember. But in particular, for this plan, at least seven or eight years. And I don't think any of us here could argue that that has been a successful product, process. It just hasn't. It hasn't worked for the council, it hasn't worked for the planning commission, it hasn't worked for the residents. Hasn't worked for the developer, hasn't worked for the property owners. But we do have a plan that allows people to come forward with everything, most everything everyone has asked for. And all we need to do is let that happen. When, and then let the council and the people talk about that application. Right now, we're not letting that happen. And so in thinking about this myself, I thought, well, the only thing that I can think of is to amend the plan in a way. Or to make sure that people understand that we can go through a process that residents actually understand. And that's a plan development, because we're used to it, we know how it works. Or that's something new and different, a development agreement, which is a contract where people actually get to sit down and say. I would like three acres of a park. You don't have to do that under the specific plan. But the town could demand that in exchange for something else that perhaps the developer wanted. And you'd go through the process and you'd come up with something that we could then present to the public and say, okay, here's our best judgment. But to continue on the path that we are, I think would be a bad idea. To change the plan area, to reduce it for the accommodation of one property owner, I think would be a bad idea. The whole process when we started was to amalgamate the properties, get a cohesive infrastructure, get a street system. Get a, basically plop a zoning plan that we already have for the entire town onto a new parcel of property. That hasn't worked because we're not used to working with that kind of a plan. But if we parcel out things, we're not going to have, we're going to have a pipeline that ends at the border of somebody's property. A sewer line that ends at the border of somebody else's property. And no improvements to Los Gatos Boulevard. So my, that's a long way of introducing the fact that I think, my motion is to keep the specific plan as is. But for to amend Section 6.4.1. To specifically allow the option of coming forward with an application by either a plan development. Or through a development agreement process, which is to be developed by the town at different hearings to do that. That's, so that's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's like my other North Forty motion.
Anybody like to second? Well, I'll go ahead and second for discussion purposes and I'll just, I'll, let me explain my reasoning. I also agree with what Mr. Leonardi said, that the commercial has benefits. And that was part of the original plan. It has a lot of benefits to, you know, our sales tax revenue. It has benefits to neighbors in that area that said they want to have commercial to go to. The original North Forty plan was a, you know, it seemed like it was a good balance. What ended up failing in phase one is, you know, if we go back to the North Forty Advisory Committee that crafted it. Their vision was to go for unmet needs in housing and our unmet needs in commercial, capturing leakage and so forth. When we changed a couple of elements in it just before we approved it at the council level. We lost effectively the housing for millennials and the movedown units. I thought that those were good unmet needs that we should have been striving for. If we made changes to the plan, I would want to see something that made sure we got what we wanted. Because I think in phase one, we didn't get what we want. We didn't get housing that met either of those needs. We got something in, you know, in the middle. That ended up with kind of a squash down, spread around buildings everywhere. I originally liked the idea of trying to get more open space by allowing things to be taller and thinner. You can see between them, you can have views. We lost a lot of that in the first part of it. I would be interested in doing that with housing only, additional housing only if we could get back to what the original needs were. But I'm also willing to go with no changes or the minor change of allowing. A change that allows us to have development agreements. So I'll second that motion. Other comments? Councilmember Seg.
Okay, so. As we've learned in the phase one, the devil's in the details. And so, well, as my colleagues here, I've spent a lot of time thinking about the revisions. And I spent time thinking about the original effort to look at what the unmet needs were in town versus where we are now. And several things have changed between when the original plan was first designed and now. One is that it is quite apparent the unmet housing needs. Specifically, the affordability in the movedown. We've had several hearings that discussed those exact needs. We've also talked about the increased traffic. And the mechanisms we as a council can do to try and reduce the traffic. We know we can't remove the congestion, but we can reduce it. We have seen studies that showed more residential, less commercial will reduce traffic. So that's, that's something that lots of documentation has come forward. We've also looked at, things that have changed are the housing laws. And that will continue to change. And the questions that I asked our staff about what are the expectations of us? To use our zoning mechanisms to make sure that housing, affordable housing is, is at least. What can we do to make it more affordable? And to create a process so that the expectation that what we want is affordability based on income levels. Versus affordability that's relative based on Los Gatos rules. So those are things that I think we can try to address with any revisions. And I have a couple of, at least suggestions I would like to put into the, a potential amendment. If there is any interest at all from other colleagues. And those really are putting in our housing element chart. So that it's very clear what our expectations are. So that we don't come out with additional, another, if the capacity is 33 more units. I want it clear that we don't want 33 more above moderate homes, we have enough of that. So what can we do? We can have a chart that clearly specifies what that is. We could even reduce the square footage to help reduce those prices. To me, that's clear. Another thing that I think that needs to be absolutely clear is we need to develop a transportation demand management system that we've all talked about. But it's not specified in the specific plan. I want it absolutely clear that we want things that will help reduce traffic. And those are two clear mechanisms that we can state upfront. That could be further enhanced with a development agreement. But at least the expectation is out there that these are the things that we'll be looking for in any future application. And so those are the two things that I absolutely want to see in this new revision.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have given this meeting and the potential for amending the specific plan a lot of thought. Not only for years, but throughout the timeframe leading up to this meeting. And as I hope those of you who are listening at home and here can appreciate. I wish it were a straight line, I wish it was a linear analysis. It is not. And so that's why it becomes so complex within each one of us. And then often amongst the five of us. The, the, starting with, let's start some things that for me are givens. I chaired the North Forty Advisory Committee. It was a large committee and it met lots of times over a long period of time. And ultimately, we passed the North Forty specific plan onto the planning commission without a vote of approval. And the reason for me that there was no vote of approval is that I could not vote in favor of the commercial. The north part of the property, the commercial portion of it. Because I felt the commercial, it was too dense. And I was concerned about its impact on our town, especially our downtown. When the North Forty specific plan came to the council, I also voted against it at that point. I lost, but I voted against it at that point. And for the same reason, because I was concerned about the commercial component and its impact on our town, specifically on our downtown. So now we have the specific plan before us again. What I anticipated, starting last, I guess it was September. As we were looking to amend or potentially amend the specific plan. What I thought we would be doing is modifying the, and I was hoping, reducing the commercial component. I was very surprised in June when the prior, the existing developer for the south part suggested housing. My first reaction, my gut reaction in hearing that was, we don't need any more housing. But as the month and a half, two months have gone by. I have been working through that suggestion, not the way it was proposed. But I have been working through that concept. And the, what, what I have, where I am right now. Is housing in the north part of the North Forty could be acceptable. I agree with Ms. Saioq and I have all kinds of notes and notations also. For me, that housing would have to be either affordable by these various metrics. That are in this, what is it, Attachment 46. Or by virtue of the fact that the units are smaller. I too would want housing that has, that we have always tried to address since we were working on this plan. Which was the younger people, the millennials, and the older people, the movedowns. I don't believe units that are 2,700, 2,800 square feet are necessary. The, the other issue that came up again at our last meeting. Was the fact that the property, the property owners on the very north end. You know, have not reached a, have not been able to communicate or reach an agreement with the property owners that are further south. And I think that is an issue. I don't think that we should just let one group of people pull along another group of people. And I think that is an issue that could be resolved either in an amended specific plan or in a development agreement. So where am I right now? I'm not going to speak about the moratorium because that's our next agenda item. But I would consider housing. I would consider housing that was limited in size. I would consider, not retail, yeah, commercial. That was a component of the north part of the North Forty. I would definitely consider a hotel. In fact, I was thinking maybe we could push the hotel further down north. And so therefore, if it wanted to be closer to the boulevard, people might not object as much about the height. So those are my thoughts. It's probably not anything, I don't totally agree with any one of the prior speakers. But I don't totally disagree with them either.
Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Again, comments about the housing. The developer had an opportunity to provide movedown housing, millennial housing in the first phase. They chose not to do that. Their approach to the affordable housing was to put 49 units of the senior housing. And that assured them, what was it, 273 market rate homes in the first phase. When in fact, if they would have thought more globally about the project, they could have addressed the housing upfront across the whole project. And I think it was the understanding at one point where we were all aware that there was going to be 33 units. On the second phase or whatever we were going to call it. With that said, you know, after hearing all the discussion. I think, you know, I will be supporting the motion because I think it's a logical next step. I think keeping the existing plan the same and then getting some kind of a direction through a formal agreement. Is a good approach moving forward, so we don't keep spinning our wheels here. And again, I guess, a question for the town attorney, if I may. If you can once again describe, should the motion pass. What would occur with the development agreement if somebody said, okay, the developer comes forward and they say. I want to get rid of this 400,000 square feet of commercial and I want to put in 455 houses. Is that still an option at this point, or would that be an option moving forward?
It would still be possible. I think with the motion, if it passes, the first thing we would do is work on language to the amendment section. To make certain that it is clear that you can either do this through some type of PD form or through a development agreement. And then I would bring back, as soon as I possibly can, probably September. A development agreement ordinance that needs to be in place for the entire town. agreement ordinance that needs to be in place for the entire town, and let you guys vet that out and get that in place also within a couple of months, thirty days after there, and so that those mechanisms would be available in case the main developer wanted to come through and ask for additional homes. He would have to go through that development agreement process or whatever the process was outlined in those amendments in the specific plan. But yes, there would nothing prevent him from doing that and requesting additional homes instead of the commercial.
May I follow up?
Please, go ahead.
So would that entail a planning commission hearing?
Oh, yeah.
And a further council hearing?
Absolutely.
And the public gets re-engaged in the process?
Yes, and the development agreement spells out that specific project, as Joel mentioned, whether that's two conceptual meetings, how many you want even to go from neighborhood meetings, all of that is spelled out so that developer knows exactly what he has to do to get approved.
Okay. One more comment, if I may. Because one of my problems with this is I don't think a good majority of the public is aware of what's happening here. You know, we get this little switcheroo in June, right before our recess, it comes back in August, right before everyone, while everyone's on vacation and they're going back to school, and they're asking for four-hundred-and-fifty-five homes, because the first time around, they didn't do the right thing, I think, and here we are kind of rewarding, potentially rewarding bad behavior, or should I say, non-full-disclosure behavior. I want the public to be able to weigh in on this. There probably are a lot of Los Catos residents that have kids in the Campbell Union School District that could be potentially, they should be able to comment on whether they want that many homes put in their school district. I mean, obviously, that happened on the first phase with the homes. There will be residents who say, I want more services and less homes. I want to hear from those people, so I just want to make sure that if we vote on this this evening, this motion that's on the table, that we will be assured more public input on this process, which I think you stated we will.
Okay, Councilmember Specter.
Thank you. I want to follow up on that question of our attorney or of staff. If, if this motion passes, and if property owners do not come forward requesting a development agreement or anything of the, or any amendments, then the development would occur by virtue of the provisions of the current specific plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that is why I won't support the motion.
Councilmember Jensen.
Just a couple of things. I, to the extent that there was a suggestion that I amend the motion, I'm going to respectfully decline. I point out that Section four-point-one-zero of our current specific plan calls for transit demand management. The specific plan area is currently located outside of an established core, blah, blah, blah. Therefore, transportation demand management programs are required for each application within the specific plan area. So it's there. With respect to other property owners being disadvantaged by this specific plan or this process, I think that they're disadvantaged because we have a moratorium that's not allowing them to come forward with an application. With respect to housing, we can amend the plan to ask to put a chart in or to ask for affordable housing. That doesn't mean we will get it. If we engage in negotiations and reach a contract agreement that's then approved by the Plan, Planning Commission and the Town Council, we can actually guarantee that housing, regardless of what the current specific plan says. So I think it's a more effective way to get housing for the community, because I've always been an advocate for affordable housing. I continue to be an advocate for affordable housing. I think a development agreement or a plan development is a better way to go about trying to get it. So I'm sticking with my motion.
Okay. I'll just make a quick comment. I'm not rushing to call the question, although I second it. I'm actually still on the fence on this motion. I think that there could be improvements. We, we could do something with housing, making it a little bit better. My thought is, we don't go to four-fifty-five. I bet there's a, some kind of mix of some, some more commercial and some number more houses that, that might be a better solution than any of the ones that we've, we've sort of seen. What I've struggled with is, this council has a hard time writing the rules for a vision that hasn't been drawn out for us, and I think what's been drawn out for us is probably not the best solution. Can we, can we, can we, you know, what, would, if I thought we could craft changes for something that didn't have the drawing in front of us, I, I would be interested in continuing the discussion and, and not voting at this point with the motion. I'll go ahead and let Councilmember Saack continue her thoughts.
So I, I do agree with, with the mayor, that we do have a hard time creating language that clearly specifies what we want. I think that's quite evident, given the long, drawn-out hearings we had with the Phase One application. What I've been told by our staff and by planners is that in the specific plan, what is most helpful is to, as clearly as possible, specify what you want. And so I am trying to be as clear as possible tonight. In our housing element, we said we would provide a hundred-and-fifty-six very low. We got forty-nine. Low, we said eighty-four, we got zero. Moderate, we said thirty, we got one. And so of that remains, there's a possibility for a hundred-and-seven very low, eighty-four low, twenty-nine moderate. And understanding that I'm not limiting it to just this, because there are other uses allowed on the remaining twenty acres, I would like to see housing that is within these parameters. We don't need any more above moderate, but we need very low, we need low, we need moderate, and any remaining housing that is put on this property, I would like to fit those income parameters. I don't know how else to state that, other than say it tonight and ask our staff to help me write it. So that is my preference.
Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. As it stands now, there's thirty-three more homes on the table, as of this evening. Of those thirty-three more homes are twenty percent of those below market price homes by our town standards.
They will be required to be below market price, correct?
And if I may follow up?
Please.
If some number of homes comes forward in the future, they would all automatically be subject to that same rule.
Correct. The specific plan requires twenty percent for any project that brings forward housing.
So if there's two-hundred homes, there would be forty?
Correct.
Below-market homes. Okay, and so that's already in there?
That's correct.
So if, what Councilmember Saack is requesting, is, is that redundant language? Is it?
It's not redundant. What Councilmember Saack is saying is that she wants an all-affordable housing project to come forward, using the numbers in our housing element.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll make a comment on that. I, I can see, you know, it'd be nice to have an all-affordable housing project, but I don't see how it gets paid for. You know, if you build below, you know, very, if you build very low, housing for very low, you're going to have to subsidize the construction cost, never mind the land cost. So I'm, I'm having trouble visualizing how that, how that takes us anywhere. I mean, if, I, I could see if you said, well, I want some number of very low or low or below moderate, and then you allow additional houses to pay for it, or something to pay for it. I mean, you don't, it doesn't, it doesn't come for free. I, I could see that as a viable solution, but just wanting completely affordable housing, I don't see how, how it's going to happen.
Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So based on what the mayor said, you know, what happened in the first phase, how it was paid for, was they used the airspace above a store to put forty-nine very low-income homes or units in, which enabled them to put in two-hundred-and-seventy-three market rate homes. So how could we be assured that the same tactic will not be used on this next phase?
Is that a question or just a comment?
That is a question for staff.
Okay.
So it's, I would say that I don't think any of us could say that that couldn't happen, but you'll have to evaluate that when a project comes forward. Obviously, you know, you have that history and that experience of going through that process before, but I don't think any of us could tell you that that isn't a possibility.
Vice Mayor?
Follow up. So last time when this was occurred, we were fed all kinds of reasons why we couldn't prevent it from happening, and I'm assuming that those same reasons would be offered to us again?
That's correct.
If it were to happen. So the only way for us to prevent this from happening moving forward would be what?
Well, so. So currently, your specific plan, what, the main problem with our first phase was the Housing Accountability Act. The Housing Accountability Act currently won't apply to our second phase here. The specific plan is only thirty-three units, you know, under the current, they could come in and ask for that density bonus to get up to forty-five. There would be affordable number, the numbers of the twenty percent in there, and so that can still be done. But there wouldn't be any Housing Accountability Act. You're going to have complete discretion over the project that comes in with regards to its look, its feel. It's going to be commercial, and that's the way it is. If, in fact, you increase the number of homes to a hundred to two-hundred, you will potentially be in the exact same situation. The Housing Accountability Act, someone comes in with a complete residential project, and they're going to be able to determine how the project is going to look and feel, just as we were before. We could additionally add those objective standards and to make certain we get exactly what we want, but you're going to be right back in the same situation if all you do is add housing to your, um, um, specific plan. Yeah.
Boy, um, let's go with Councilmember Saack first.
And, and I will say, I mean, that's, but if you don't do that, and a developer wants to do that, and it's through a development agreement, you can specifically state what's going to happen in that, and that could be, through the process, you can change the, the look and feel and the din, dynamics of where the park goes and how it's going to come out at, at the very end. And again, I think one of the members of the public had all sorts of projects that wanted to see happen from the development of it, and there's no way you can require those, because there's no nexus for this size project for those projects, but you, through a development agreement, you certainly could at least try or obtain potential funding for any of those projects or any other projects.
Councilmember Saack.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things, and I'm not trying to be difficult whatsoever about the, the infeasibility of affordable, of all affordable housing. Again, I want to remind that there's an opportunity to build other commercial square footage that would be a mixed use, perhaps that pays for the affordability. I think what I'm trying to do is just set the expectation that this is a specific plan based on what the community needs are, what the regional needs are, and with regards to housing, I think I'm making it very clear what my expectations are. And there's other ways that I'm hoping a developer or a future applicant can find to financially make it work. There's the commercial aspects that could help pay for the affordability. There may be, in future development agreements, compromises so that we get more affordable homes. I don't know what the different answers are, and I think what my colleagues up here are saying is that through a developer agreement, we can reach those different mechanisms. But I think what I'm trying to do is make it absolutely clear that I am looking for homes that fit the income levels that we do not have in our community. And so again, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not trying to stall this project. I just want to make it clear that these are the income levels that I'm looking at, and that I'm open to other mechanisms to make affordability work.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I go back to the fact that the development agreement, should this move forward as it is currently structured, is not a mandate, and so it may happen or it may not happen. The way I was looking to have housing that meets our needs is in part because of what we have up here as Attachment Forty-Six, the various income levels from various jurisdictions and documents. That's one way. Another way is by the size of the units. And as was pointed out, those housing types could be, could help be financed by virtue of the commercial, by virtue of a hotel. So that's what I was looking for. To allow twenty more acres to potentially be developed as whatever it is, four-hundred with thousands, whatever, hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial, and once again, miss the opportunity to, to address an issue which we have in this town, I think would be unfortunate.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Would there be a possibility, I have two questions. First one is, would there be a possibility of getting a sample of what a development agreement might entail before we would vote on amending the specific plan, as which was discussed this evening? Because we're sitting up here, and we don't really know what the developer is going to do.
There's, there's hundreds of them on the internet from all different communities all around us. The last one was Palo Alto, it was just a couple of months ago.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is...
Yes, we can provide you examples.
Is it possible for staff to meet with the developer and have them put forth an agreement of some kind that we can bring forth in a public hearing and let the public look at it, and we look at it, and we understand what it says before we agree to allowing, having such agreement?
So even through the application process, when the development agreement comes first, the council has the say to say, we're not signing this agreement. You know, you have the ultimate authority to enter into that agreement or not if it was to occur. So example is, is, and the developer has the ability, example of, developer comes in and does the project just what he wants, and it goes through the process, and there's all of that, and it gets vetted, and the council determines it's not enough open space, it's not enough, whatever the requirements, it's too high, you can deny that development agreement, or you can make demands, and the developer can say, I'm not going to sign it either. So I don't know if it'd do any good at this point in time for something to come forward right now that's a sample from the, the current developer, because, I mean, you'd be entering into that process. That first look at a development agreement might not look anything like the last one.
And if I may add, each development agreement is typically tailor-made to the exact circumstances, and it's not uncommon for councils to essentially enter first some kind of letter of intent, so that way you can stipulate very clearly what are those specific outcomes that you would like to see, whether it's deeper housing affordability, a five-acre park, some other community benefit, et cetera. And then likewise, the developer would have already articulated their initial desire, such as vested rights, maybe some additional housing, et cetera. So through the process, you have the ability, as the council, to guide and direct the outcome through a development agreement. So it is a very powerful tool, but it is a negotiation, but setting forth those initial parameters can be a very smart way to start that process.
Vice Mayor, follow up, I guess? Or would you like Ms. Jensen to go first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rennie. So my concern stems from when Netflix was getting their, their campus. It was the first time anybody had seen a development agreement in this town, and upon reading it, it was severely stacked in favor of the developer, and of course, that will come forth again. So right now, we're voting to amend the specific plan to allow this process to happen this evening, potentially. That's the motion on the table. And before we would get to that step, I mean, why could we not say, hey, these are some parameters that were discussed? Is there a way to draft? I'm sure there's a lot of standard language in a development agreement. Like Mr. Schultz said, there's hundreds of them floating out in the internet somewhere, but specific to some of the points that were discussed this evening to assure us that before we vote on the specific plan, that this would be something that we would even want to engage in. So that's... So that's one question. And the second question has to do with the PD process, that, which hasn't really been discussed yet. And I was gonna ask to describe, you know, with the motion on the table, what the PD process would entail. Would they be able to do a PD overlay? Would they be able to say, "Okay, this is a specific plan, but in this corner, we're gonna do a PD overlay, and in that corner, we can do whatever we want"? Because the way PDs have been working around here is whatever's in that PD, your streets are narrower, your houses are, your lot sizes don't matter anymore. Those kinds of things all change with the plan development. So, I'm just curious how that would work inside what we're proposing this evening.
Well, I'm sure Ms. Pravetti will have some additional information because she's worked with a lot more specific plans than I have. But I think in the hierarchy of rules, you kinda have general plan, specific plan, and plan development. So I'm not sure how many of those rules you can modify via a plan development without modifying that specific plan. I think that probably becomes one of the discussions.
Right. Essentially, when we enacted the specific plan, we rezoned the property at the same time. So we set the policy level objectives, but we also rezoned the land. So, already, we have a tailored zoning for the North Forty, and it equates to the specific plan. A developer could come forward and say, "I wanna modify that zoning in, in order to allow me to do..." whatever their outcomes are, more housing, some economic development, et cetera. And so we would then go through a development process, as we typically would, that is analogous to a PD, but it doesn't necessarily need to be a PD zoning. If, in fact, there is an interest in a PD, then essentially what we're doing is is doing a zoning overlay over an existing zoning district. And it's, it is theoretically possible, but it becomes a little bit cumbersome when you already have a tailored zoning, and you could do a carve-out saying, you know, "Those northern property owners want whatever they want, and they need to change the zoning rules to accomplish it." That would be, that would occur through, you know, the, the amendment process. Having said that, to both of the questions of the Vice Mayor, it's still possible to add language to the specific, specific plan to enable development agreements and to enable rezoning specifically, plan developments, if it's the will of the council. It doesn't tie the hands of the council or of developers that they have to go through those processes. But if our plan acknowledges them, then it just broadens the implementation tools that are available to the town and to the town council to ensure that you get what you want. And to the Vice Mayor's comment about, "Let's identify those development agreement outcomes now," I would just caution that our world has changed, you know, greatly, even in the last year and a half. So, to fast-forward another year and to project what a future council might want in a development agreement, may not be necessary. I think any developer who's, who's, is well-experienced will watch this tape. Will hear your conversation. Will understand the types of things that, that you're interested in obtaining. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
I wanted to bring us back to the motion. The motion was intended to keep the vast majority of the specific plan in place as it, as is. Thank you, Ms. Pravetti. It was intended to add options for people to come forward with applications or a way to get through this process that is different than we have now, and to put that specifically into our plan, be that a plan development or a development agreement. A development agreement could, as Councilwoman Specter said, no, it's not a mandate, nor is anything in our specific plan a mandate. It's up to an applicant to come forward with what they have in mind by adding a plan development option or a development agreement option. The town can also say, through its letter of intent or its process that's developed for a development agreement, what it wants in a more specific fashion than the specific plan. And we're still gonna have the public process. So, for example, in our, I think this was an addendum for our meeting tonight, it, the staff provides us with suggestions about what a process for development agreement might entail. That would, a statement of purpose, findings, public benefits of the development agreement, application requirements, notice and hearing procedures, planning, commission, and governing body review. How does this, would the agreement get recorded? How could it be amended? How could it be ended if there was some problem? What would the review requirements be? Could there be a periodic review if, if it's working out? Have you complied with what you're supposed to comply with, both on the applicant's side and the town's side? So, what I'm trying to accomplish through this motion, or what I intended, was not to preclude affordable housing, not to put the cart before the horse by saying, "Give us an application that's not an application that we can look at. Give us an agreement we can, that's not an agreement that we can look at." But to give us options and give people out there that are interested in bringing us proposals different ways to go about doing that, because the way that we're doing it now is not working. So, it, a development agreement or plan development would not preclude affordable housing. It would not preclude meeting these categories. It might actually give us a better opportunity to get those because we would be in negotiation with the developer that we would want that, and how would we get that funded through an agreement? It might give us opportunities to limit size of units. And I, I would argue that limiting the size of the unit doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable. I think a couple of weeks ago, there was a San Jose Mercury News article about a property that was selling on Kimball Avenue that was about a thousand-square-foot house that was going for one and a half million dollars. So, small doesn't mean affordable necessarily. But, these are things that could be explored by way of negotiation that then comes back to the public for vetting it, through the planning commission and the town council. So what this motion does, hopefully, is to have all the good ideas that we had before, have the options that we had before, but give us additional options in how we might explore reaching some kind of consensus about a development under this specific plan. It just gives us another option of considering proposed developments. So that's the intent of the motion.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The concern I have is that the plan development or the development agreement, if this motion passes, does or could create options. However, what it leaves intact is the current specific plan. And as I said before, I have concerns about the current specific plan. And so if a developer or a property owner does not want to partake of the development agreement or, uh, plan development, then we're back to the existing specific plan. I explained why I don't support it and have it in the past. And then what you have is a developer with the right and rights to develop under that specific plan. And as long as it fits within the parameters, and we know from last year, as long as it fits within the parameters of that specific plan, it needs to be approved. And that is where my concern lies.
Vice Mayor?
Maybe we can go back in time again, and I have a question for the town attorney. So the current specific plan was already challenged, and so we voted, and it was approved, then it was reversed, and then it was challenged in court, and then it was re-approved.
No, it was denied.
Or denied. Uh, and anyway, basically, we have a council resolution which the current specific plan was adopted.
So the specific plan wasn't challenged whatsoever. It was just your decision on the project and the denial of that project. And the court found that you had based, although the findings were based on the evidence, they were based on subjective standards instead of objective standards which were required under the Housing Accountability Act. And so that was it. So it had nothing to do with whether the, your specific plan is legal or not legal. It had nothing to do with that.
That is correct. However, we have a current specific plan, which is already on the table.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if we voted no on this specific, if someone were to vote no on the specific plan, we can't vote no on the specific plan tonight. It's already there.
Right. You can't, you can't reject a specific plan.
So in other words, when I listen to the discussion, I kinda wish we would've had a development agreement from the beginning. You know, that might've helped some of our, made this process a lot less laborious. I don't know why that didn't occur that way. I'm leaning towards supporting it, supporting the motion here. I ask these questions to be the devil's advocate so the public can hear. I don't, you know, I think what, at this point, our best hope is that the public has more input on this project moving forward, and that's what I'm gathering from the conversation. As was stated on council earlier, there's a lot of different needs, questions, wants, ideas up here. And I think in order for us to agree on anything moving forward, I think having the ability to discuss it further, which I think, which this motion allows, might be the best way to go. The other option is, if you can explain what the other option is, suppose the motion was voted now, there could be an alternative motion, or there would be nothing. The council could vote and say, "Just leave well enough alone this evening." Is that correct? I mean, those are really what our three options are.
Yes, I think that's, that's pretty much what your options are.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify all that. Thank you.
So I guess I wanna ask a question? Go ahead.
I mean, there's nothing that prevents you from continually looking at amendments to the specific plan or doing that in six months or a year. You can make changes yourself to this specific plan at any time.
So I'm gonna ask staff this question, since we don't ask it of council members. So, uh, can you better explain to me what Councilmember Seac's suggestion was with her table? Do, did she wanna apply that to the remaining number of units, and it would be put in as a desire, not a requirement?
I, I understood her as it would be a requirement. So the remaining units that are left would all have to meet whatever, you know, categories, the very low or extremely low categories, is what I understood.
Okay. Further comments? Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes three to two with Councilmember Specter, Councilmember Seac opposed. Any further comments on this? Okay, we'll close this item and go to...
Can we actually continue to a date certain so we can bring back?
Yes, we should continue to a date certain so we can bring back those specific amendments that you've requested.
And you're, what date is staff suggesting?
September fourth, we should be able to make that date.
Councilmember Jensen, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue this to a date certain of September fourth to bring back the, the amendments that passed tonight. I would also request that we get some preliminary guidance from the staff at that time as to a process for development agreements, so that the council can be aware of how that might work, if that's possible or not.
I could probably even, for initial discussion, bring back even the draft ordinance for you to take a look at that would explain that whole process.
So that's my...
So just being a draft, it wouldn't be first reading or anything to kinda get a, some feats, get some feedback on.
Thank you. So that, that would be my motion.
Okay, do I have a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? To continue it to September fourth? That's a yes?
Yes.
And, and so everybody's a yes, I believe? Okay, passes unanimously, reluctantly. Okay, further comment? Go ahead.
If I may, because this is coming back in, with more instructions, in the staff report, could you indicate mechanisms to just clarify the outcomes we desire in future development agreements? Or is it just based on what the specific plan would include? You know, based on the discussion we heard today, right? We, we have different desires that may, that's already in here. We want deeper affordability. We want more traffic demand management. Like, how do you signal that other than just saying it in a public hearing?
Our guiding documents primarily, our general plan and specific plan are the guiding documents for that, and also what is transposed and what we've heard here and what we would hear from the public. You know, the first salvo on that comes from the developer, though, through the application process. And in, in the Netflix situation, which you mentioned, that was really his first salvo, and we didn't really get into that negotiation process. We received the development agreement, said this is just, we're not gonna accept it, go away, instead of, that's through that process that you would say, "This is not acceptable. This is, this is what we're looking for, for further negotiations." But I think the process will have that a little bit in, in the ordinance of how that would transpire.
I think so.
Okay, so I'll close this item and move on to item number two. Staff like to lead us off here. Item two is considering, consideration of interim urgency ordinance of the town council.
Yes, good evening. This is to consider the moratorium on prohibiting in the issuance of any land use development entitlements within the North Forty. You approved that last year, and it's set to expire tonight. So I've provided you with a draft ordinance in case there's four-fifths of council. It will require four-fifths of council to approve that. And you have to make specific findings that there would be a immediate threat to the health and safety of the town to be able to make that finding. I've provide you a little bit of case law on that. And I would, I would state that, you know, it's been heard that traffic is terrible. That's not going to be a standard that would rise to the level of health and safety for the traffic issue. You know, you're usually looking in a situation, the cases that I have found and use, usually are when there's not enough water. Maybe there's been saltwater intrusion into the wells, and there's not enough water to allow development to occur. That's a health and safety issue. The other one was sanitation. Maybe there's not enough capacity at your sanitation sewer system. Those are the health and safety issues that the courts are looking for. They're not looking for traffic issues, especially in this case where the properties that you're putting the moratorium on are not creating that traffic. That traffic is coming from an outside source. And in addition, your EIR for this, for these properties said that the traffic can be mitigated. So, that's not gonna be a health and safety issue because we're worried about so much traffic, we can't allow for the development to happen. So that's, you know, what I was up against. But certainly, council can make those findings and, and can look at health and safety issues that it's concerned about that are intimate. I would say, you know, if, if a project came forward that we were concerned about, we certainly could still place a moratorium on if, if we could come up with those health and safety about a specific project. But, you know, my concern hearing the public, and especially some of these small property owners, is, is there's been a moratorium, not just for a year, but it's really been six out of the last eight years, if you count the first five or six when we were developing our specific plan. And it just, it concerns me, the longer you put a moratorium on, the more likely is is litigation can happen. But again, council can make those findings. It, it might have much more knowledge about the community, the surroundings, and the health and safety issues that could be affected by the project going forward. And so, I'm looking for that input to make sure it's on the record if you do do, pass the moratorium by four-fifths vote.
Okay, questions from council before we open? Public comment? Vice Mayor Leonidas?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I know in the past, we adopted an environmental impact report. There's also a statement of overriding considerations regarding the Lark seventeen interchange, something to the effect that we know traffings, traffic will be worse at that interchange if this development goes in, that there's nothing we could do about it, but we're gonna accept it anyway. Is that correct, my thinking?
No, the statement of overriding considerations for traffic was for two or three freeway segments on Highway eighty-five. All of the other intersections and on-ramps were mitigated to less than significant level.
Second question, based on what Mr. Schultz said about the sanitation, how do we know if there will be four-hundred-and-fifty-five homes versus, say, four-hundred-thousand square feet of commercial, whether or not the sanitation would be adequate?
We haven't approved four-hundred-and-fifty homes, so there, there's only the, the homes that have been approved. And we certainly checked with water and sewer on, on that, and the EIR did for up to the commercial levels that are allowed. And I don't think there's been any change of circumstances, and I'm aware, regarding water and sewer.
And the other item I would point out is that any future project that came in under the specific plan would need to do an initial study and show that it does comply with those capacities. And... with those capacities, and, and that that capacity exists.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public testimony. Do I have any cards? I see you have a card over there. Okay. Would anybody wish to speak to us on this item? I see Mr. Ventura coming forward. You can hand in your card afterwards if you don't have it made yet.
Can we have him start again, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, could you restart us three minutes, please?
Excuse me, Mayor Rennie and members of the council. I realize this is a tough position for you. We, you know, for the five, speaking for the owners of the five parcels of the very north end of the project, we have not been able to move forward in any way, shape, or form for the last six years, and would like to move forward. We would like to also, if the town wants to impose a moratorium on the rest of the property, like you to do that, but legally, apparently, that can't be done. So I think the best argument we can make is, the current specific plan limits the amount of new housing, and the majority landowner wants to put housing in. So the current plan does give you a certain level of protection, short term, from any sort of project the council's not ready for, and would allow, as we said before, then the landowners out there are willing to live with the constraints of the current specific plan. So that might be the best compromise, in fairness to all. But to keep tying this up because of controlling landowners' whims and follies, it's, it's tough on us, and I don't want the council to make a mistake either, because look what happened in round one. You know, fool me once, you know, shame on, on you, fool me twice, but we don't want to have a fool me twice on this project. So I want the council to do the right thing, but it has been a significant burden, and our properties are unmarketable with a moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. I'll make sure you finish your card. I have a card for Ann Salvador Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor Rennie and council. My name's Anna Salvador Rodriguez, and I am the planning associate with Silicon Valley at Home. I just wanted to, once again, kind of reiterate what was in our letter that we sent in yesterday regarding the moratorium. We would encourage council to allow the moratorium on North Forty to expire as recommended by staff. An extension would only serve to put further stress on the housing problem and shift housing responsibilities to neighboring communities. Allowing the moratorium would expire allows Los Catos to move forward and produce the housing that the community needs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Thank you. I have no more cards. I see some people making moves. Looks like next up Sandy Decker.
I'm not sure you guys really have any idea, because I know we don't, where you were in the amendment process for the specific plan. Now, you've overlaid two overlays, and we've got a specific plan. We've got jump ball on whether we want a development agreement or whether we want a PD, which we don't want either one. I appreciate Mrs. Jensen's effort, but I really don't know how we have solidified the specific plan as it was, however it was, left alone before we decided not to go through the rest of the amendment process. So I think someone said, and I think it was Mr. Leonidas, is there some way you can let the public know what you've done? If you're going to bring back your language, which you all discussed ad nauseam here without a lot of understanding exactly where you are and what you're imposing on us, and even the developers that should come forward, and let's hope several do, with lots of ideas. Now, I don't know what you've done. We've written a specific plan with some specificity to it, with an awful lot of, I think, at least feelings for what kind of land use we were going to have. Now, if you come and discuss with me something that we might like, we're going to discuss it with you, and where do we stand? I would really like an answer to this when I finish. Is it 33 houses, or do you want to come and give me an idea of what you really want, which is another 185 houses, or, and then we get a bonus for that? I don't, I really don't know what you've done, and I hope that there is a resolution that goes out publicly, so that we know what now has been imposed on us after seven years of working on this. Thank you very much.
Questions? I see no questions. Thank you. Angelia Dorner's making the next move?
Hello, I just can't help getting up here a lot, you know, so you're stuck with me.
As long as you're in town, you might as well.
Absolutely. Well, I can do it from afar, too, so just keep that in mind. Anyway, listen, I, I just really think this particular slide sort of says it all as to traffic demand management. This town needs to have a cumulative traffic demand management process or plan in place to deal with all of the developments that have already been approved, as well as those that are already in the planning department work process. I mean, this is really insane. Highway 9, Alberto Way, you've got McCarthy coming, okay? He's got the power contacts of his father. This is, this is going to be hell, and this was one of the reasons why I'm, I'm basically getting out, including the North Forty. I think there should be a moratorium on all development, all commercial development, at least, throughout the town, because I don't think that there's been adequate attention paid to what is currently going to be facing you guys when all of these things start being constructed at one time. The next five to six years is going to be nuts. The other thing is that I really think that a pro forma on phase one for North Forty is really critical for you to do before you make decisions on phase two. Have someone really delineated the responsibilities of costs for maintaining the streets, the public park, protecting the gardens, et cetera? The original thing said that it would be private roads, but open to public. Well, our general plan says that those roads need to be deeded over to the town if they're for public use. So who's going to pay for all those roads and all the maintenance on those roads? Is that going to be our responsibility, or is that built into the HOA? Is that the way we get our money back, because we're not taking care of those private roads? There's a lot of questions that have never been answered as it relates to maintenance and costs of phase one, and I'm very concerned that unless you take a financial perspective on what phase one will actually do to this town as to, as to the revenues that will be coming in, and the cost delineated between the developer or the HOA, which all of this is supposed to be an HOA, and how the town ends up, where do they end up on a cost structure standpoint? And until you know that, you're not going to have answers for phase two, because I'm afraid the town's going to get stuck with an awful lot of cost burdens that you're not anticipating. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none. Next up, Markeen Smith.
Hi, I'm Markeen Smith, Drake's Bay Avenue. I 100% agree with Angelia Dorner's, thing of her, her analysis of the situation. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the transit, which we have been waiting for, for many, many years. There, there is no way for the people who will be trapped in the heat island of the North Forty to get past the freeway cloverleaf and the 17 and 85, not to mention Lark Avenue and Los Catos Boulevard, and the kids trying to go to school across Los Catos Boulevard, you know, four-lane, it will be widened. But I had several things, I had a discussion with Mr. Schultz at one point, and my brother lives in Vancouver, British Columbia, and they have successfully implemented, as of a year ago, a 15% developer fee to pay for the transit for any developer who is non-resident. So it wouldn't affect Mr. Ventura or his clients, but any, any buyer of property. And I, I hope the town council will ask the staff to look into something like that for Los Catos. It's worked very successfully in Vancouver, where these buildings were developed, and they turned out to be way more than Vancouverites could afford, but they were being bought up by foreign investors and then rented back for outrageous rents. And so I agree completely with Councilmember Saak that they have to be affordable. And then the second thing is, the biggest thing to me, is you have to have a way for the people to get out of that prison that they'll be in, out of that property, and over the street and into Los Catos, into the trails, the recreation, the parks, the everything else that would be safe. I can't imagine, when I was talking with Ed Marmota one time, we heard that there had, somebody had been killed on Highway 85, and we were concerned it might have been one of his relatives, because anybody could wander into, you know, think of when you were a teenager. Think of pets, I mean, anything, but with no pedestrian bridge across any of those major arteries or freeways or cloverleaves, there's really no way out, and there's no way to transit, which is what the Visona Light Rail District, which this property, the North Forty, is in, requires access to transit, and there is none. I mean, if you want to wait for an hour for a bus to go the long way around past Good Samaritan Hospital and then to transit, you could perhaps get there. You can't walk there.
Okay, questions? Looks like you have one question from Vice Mayor Leonidas.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Ms. Smith, is, what is your position on the moratorium?
Oh, that is, my position is to, for sure, do the moratorium, and I would exempt the small property owners that are represented by Mr. Ventura, because they are, that's, that's a little group that's, well, first of all, they're local, second of all, they're small, second, and we can individually approve as they decide to sell their properties or whatever they're going to do with their properties. And so that is something that's manageable, and it's not like taking an area the size of Almond Grove and saying, we're going to privatize the whole thing and put in private security because our police can't get in there, and the roads are too skinny for the, you know, and it's going to be run by a volunteer homeowner association, and that is just no good. I would say exempt Mr. Ventura's clients, and, and keep the moratorium for everyone else.
A question from Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have a question. If the standard that we're considering to keep a moratorium in place is whether or not potential development imposes or poses an immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, how could it be that exempting particular properties because they're owned by someone local not pose that same immediate threat to health, safety, or welfare?
Well, because there are only, I, I'm not sure what the amount is, but what is that, 10% of the property or something? It's a small percentage, and so Starbucks there is not presenting an immediate danger to health, safety, and welfare. And neither is, like, there's a dental office. That isn't. But when you're talking about developing 20 acres in a massive commercial and/or residential area with people with no way out or in, because we can't widen Los Catos Boulevard at this point, and there's maybe Lark Avenue through a narrow little street that is between the freeway and the gas station, I, I can't imagine how the people can get in and out safely.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
Okay, further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have no more cards. Would anybody else wish to speak? I saw some cards, but I guess they've changed their minds. All right. Then I'll close the public testimony and come back up to council for questions, motions, thoughts. Councilmember Saak.
So I just want to ask staff a couple of questions. In our documents that we received, the Visona Light Rail element, so we, we had some discussion about transit and paying into transit, and there's one specifically, policy VLR 1.3, future development shall contribute financially to support transit services. Considering we don't know how we're going to link any future development with a potential future light rail, how do we do that?
Well, the short answer is we haven't, because it is uncertain. Obviously, as we went through the specific plan, and it's adoption, you take all of those things on, as a whole, and then you made a determination that in this case, and then even for the phase one, that requirement wasn't going to be imposed. And it is still uncertain, because funding for that, well, people have their opinions of when that may or may not occur.
That doesn't mean you could not impose that on any future development.
Right. So I wanted to get into specifics of that. So I appreciate Councilmember Jensen pointing out that in our specific plan, we do accommodate that, but how does, but one of the things that we as a council identified as a specific priority town-wide is a, is a transit, a town-wide transit demand management system, but we haven't actually said what that looks like. So until we define that, are we able to put any future development to pay into it if we don't know what that is yet?
So there's a couple of elements there. As was mentioned earlier, there's already language in the specific plan that enables transportation demand management specifics, and in fact, when you approve the phase one application, there are very specific conditions mandating what TDM means for the phase one application. And presumably, as future applications come forward, the council and the planning commission will be able to give definition to what that TDM is. On a townwide basis, we do have in our work plan strategic priorities and budget, a townwide TDM policy. So that is in the work plan. As you can appreciate, we're trying to get through some of the other priorities that are underway, but that is something on a townwide basis that we will be bringing forward when capacity allows. And then finally, with respect to Visona Light Rail specifically, you know, I think we would have to be able to identify, again, some form of nexus about what would be a reasonable share to ask for a specific plan application or some other development application within that vicinity, given the status and the regional transportation plan and VTA's plan, and there's a lot of uncertainty, and we would have to really sharpen our pencils to figure out what would be a, a correct assessment to actually implement the policy in the general plan.
And I'll just add, it's, I think we're a little off topic, but I also think work on the TDM plan's a good idea. I'd like to see us address it before more commercial projects come. I know that could be a tough order, but I mean, that's really the point, is commercial projects are the ones that really need to participate in the TDM, either by contributing money to, I'll make up a bus system we're running, or contribute in some other way that we figured out works best for our town. So I'm, I also think it's a good idea to find ways to move that up in our work plan. So back to our regularly scheduled show. Councilmember Jensen.
A question is about our regularly scheduled hearing on the moratorium process. If the council does nothing, the moratorium expires. There is no, there is no affirmative action required by the council. The only, if the council wished to continue the moratorium, then an affirmative action is required with a four-fifths vote. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Leonidas.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. If the council did nothing and the moratorium expired, doesn't preclude the council from re-adopting a new moratorium at a future date?
You certainly can. If it was next week, you know, you're still going to have to make those findings of health, safety, and welfare issues, and what has changed from today. So, you know, I've seen them within, within a six-month period be reestablished because of the time we knew, we, there was new information or new facts, so I have seen that happen. You know, it's usually where, where I've seen it challenged. You know, it's usually where I've seen it challenged is where, you know, you're only allowed a two-year moratorium, and technically, when back in two thousand and ten, there should have been this moratorium put on, instead of just sticking it in the general plan. But I've seen a two-year moratorium done for the full-time, they let it lapse for a couple of months, and then they reestablished it, and of course, that was challenged because they were trying to get around. Remember, a moratorium is just for a stopgap, it's an interim measure for you to solve the issue. It's not for you just to wait and see how the developments around it are going to develop, or wait until the traffic problem solves itself. That's not going to work under any circumstances. But if there was change in facts and change in circumstances, yes, we could reestablish a moratorium.
So my follow-up question is that the council has voted to, to explore a development agreement, there will be more public hearings, the public could bring forth information potentially that may raise new issues in the future. And then perhaps the council could decide at any time in the future if a moratorium could be revisited. In, in other words, this is not an end-all, be-all tonight. If the council were to say, okay, we do nothing, the moratorium is expired, because I heard a very good reason for the moratorium not to be continued, which is the property owners who are included in this specific plan, which incidentally, with the development agreement from the beginning, could have been excluded, which would have been nice for them, but hindsight is twenty-twenty. But I guess what I'm saying is, if there was significant public testimony or outcry or something in the future, significant evidence brought forward at a future time during a future hearing, the council can always adopt another emergency ordinance with a forfeit's vote.
That is correct.
So it's not an end-all, be-all tonight.
So we've done public testimony, we don't have to have a motion, we could just adjourn the meeting, sit here for a few more minutes and think about it. Vice Mayor?
Move to adjourn.
Would anybody like to second that motion? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Sounds like it passed unanimously. We are adjourned.